And the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the land of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no routine justice for all.
Roll call, please, Brianna.
Granquist.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Weeblehouse.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
File.
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, second.
Motion in second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
We then look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
So moved, Your Honor, second.
Motion in second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, that takes us to item number twenty on the council agenda under special presentations. We have a proclamation for February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty as Spade Day USA. The proclamation reads, whereas cats and dogs provide companionship and share the homes of hundreds of individuals in the Norfolk area, and whereas the problem of pet overpopulation is a reason for the cost of animal control and animal pound expense for Norfolk taxpayers, and animal pounds and shelters throughout the country must euthanize approximately four million cats and dogs each year, although many of them are healthy and adoptable due to the lack of critical resources such as money, space, and good adoptive homes. And spaying and neutering cats and dogs, among other annual animal companions, has been shown to drastically reduce pet overpopulation, and veterinarians, national and local animal welfare organizations, and private citizens have joined together again this year to advocate and support the spaying and neutering of companion animals on Spade Day USA. Now therefore be resolved that I, Josh Moaning, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty as Spade Day USA in the City of Norfolk and the surrounding area, and urge citizens to observe this day by having their own cats or dogs spayed or neutered, or by sponsoring the spaying or neutering of another person's cat or dog, or a homeless cat or dog. Is there anyone here tonight to receive the proclamation? Seeing no one?
Yep.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Please, after that.
Thank you, um, I am Andrew Alexander, I represent the Department of Animal Advocacy in Norfolk, and I want to thank you for declaring the twenty-fifth of this month's Spade Day USA. This is a national event that's sponsored by communities and animal shelter organizations. And also Lisa Gesser from Animal Shelter of Norde, Nebraska, who was planning to be here tonight as well, but something came up and she cannot be here. But Lisa and Animal Shelter of Norde, Nebraska also strongly support Spade Day USA. And in fact, any animal that leaves the shelter must be spayed or neutered before it can leave. And just, I know you're very busy, but there are just a couple of things. There are advantages to spay neutering, and there are millions of animals euthanized each year as the proclamation stated, simply because they're just our new homes for animals, healthy animals. And one thing that national organizations have all agreed upon is that spay neutering is one way to help prevent the tragedy of putting animals to sleep. And so spay neutering saves lives, fewer puppies and kittens. It can reduce certain types of cancer in animals, both female and males. It reduces an animal marking its territory. It can reduce aggressive behavior and also roaming. And it saves money, simply because there's just, it's less expensive to have the procedure, spay neutering procedure done on one's animal rather than trying to care for a whole litter of kittens or puppies. I guess I'd like to say thank you again, and on behalf of the NRD and Animal Shelter of Norde, Nebraska, we really appreciate your interest in your time, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am, for being here, and thank you for your work. Next proclamation for March two thousand and twenty as Problem Gambling Awareness Month. Proclamation reads, whereas there are individuals and families in our community adversely affected by problem gambling, and compulsive gambling is often hidden from family members, social services, and mental health professionals, and compulsive gambling often occurs in combination with other disorders such as chemical dependency and depression. It is important to raise awareness of the warning signs of compulsive gamblers and connect them with professional help. Now therefore, I, Josh Moaning, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim the month of March two thousand and twenty as Problem Gambling Awareness Month, and urge citizens to learn more about the consequences of problem gambling and help available through the Nebraska Gamblers Assistance Program. Is there anyone here tonight to receive the proclamation? Seeing no one, item number twenty-two, a presentation of the Lower Elkhorn Natural Resources District Grant of thirty thousand dollars for Embrace Park Restrooms. Mr. Dave Cottle, NRD Board Member, is here. Please come forward, sir.
Like Josh says, my name's Dave Cottle. I am one of the Board of Directors from Lower Elkhorn NRD, and we are happy to present the City of Norfolk with this thirty thousand dollar check for the restrooms at Embrace Park.
Very good.
Part of our, part of our mission. We have a sign here. I'm hoping you can put up somewhere in the area there.
Well, for now, let's get a picture with it. Good, okay, very good. Thank you very much. We appreciate the NRD's support, not only in this project, but all kinds of projects that we've worked together over the years. Much appreciated. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item number twenty-three on the agenda under public hearings and related action. I will open this public hearing at the request of Alfredo Morales to consider a zoning change from C-two, Central Business District, to I-one, Light Industrial District, on property located at three thirty-two West Northwestern Avenue, and I-two, Heavy Industrial District, to I-one, Light Industrial District, on property located at three seventeen West Northwestern Avenue. And to kick off the hearing, Val Grimes, our city planner, can you give us some background on this, please?
Yes, thank you. This was brought before you because there is actually a building on this C-two lot currently. It was built a few years ago. It is a car truck wash. But the person who owns it was the Time to Shine dealership there up on First and Omaha. And what, what happened was when he tried to come and get the dealer's license renewed, the detail, the retail dealership is not permitted in either C-two or I-two because he also owns this purple vacant lot across the street. And so I-one permits retail car dealership, auto dealership. And since it would be actually contiguous by making these two into I-one, because there's I-one all over here and then across the street also. That was the suggestion, instead of trying to zone change one, put a conditional use on the other, that sort of thing. And the reason why the C-two wants to be zoned also is because the state dealer requires a building to sell cars. And so instead of putting another building on the southern lot, they would connect those two with the dealer's license and be able to use the building that's already built on the north side. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Val. Any questions, council? This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to, can come forward, can do so now.
So, I'm Mike Anderson. I live right next to it.
Okay. Mike, can, can we have you signed in, sign in quick on the sheet in front of you?
There's no pen up here.
Oh.
I originally bought the property before the building was constructed, the one that's there now. And I guess my biggest thing was, I mean, yeah, they can change it. But we have had, like, issues with, I kind of read up on the city code a little bit, where it said, you know, nobody there after business hours. But that's been a constant problem even now, and it would just be that much more traffic, so forth and so on, that I have to deal with. The sound of their vehicles starting up at eight o'clock at night when trying to put my kids to bed and so forth and so on.
Mike, you live, how close do you live to the?
Right to the property line.
Okay.
That pink line in between the C-two and the R-one is, there's like a CenturyLink Junction box there. That's why that's on that way, but my property's like right next to it.
Okay.
There's a question for Val. We, we, but I-one or I-up, up to R-two, isn't there a thirty-foot requirement, green space requirement with fence, or is that just the fence?
There would be a green space if it would be a budding against R-two, but it's not a budding R-two, it's a budding I-one. So, yep. And if this change happens and the building burns down or the person wants to expand, then they would have to follow the I-one zoning district, which actually has setbacks. It has parking requirements. Right now, C-two, if they wanted to expand in C-two, they could go all the way from north to south and east to west with a complete building and have no parking requirements. So they could actually fill the, the space even more with a C-two zoning than an I-one. And he's not intending to, I don't think, add anything to the, the building necessarily. I mean, it will still remain primarily, I believe, a car truck wash, that that will remain. He just needs this for his dealer's license.
Val, what was the planning commission discussion and vote on this?
It was unanimous to vote recommendation on this. We kind of went through the same things as to what is the zoning of budding it. And at that point in time, we only had one call in when the public hearing went out, and that was to a pers, from a person to the west and just asked what was going on. And when I explained it to him, he said, oh, so they're gonna be the same zoning as I am? Okay, I'm fine with it. So that was the only comment that we had gotten about this prior to this gentleman calling this afternoon.
True. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Anderson, do you have any? Your main issue is that they're there later in the evening, I guess, after six o'clock or whatever the timeframe. But as far as the building being there and all of that, or even maybe the building to the west, I don't even know who owns that. Has that helped a little bit in the neighborhood?
Yeah.
As far as use of that property?
Yeah, it was, it was nice to see something go up there because it sat empty when I bought my house there.
Yeah, have you ever had discussions with Mr. Morales to say if he could?
It didn't end very good, because I know there was one time he had a wrecked car sitting on the east side. And I have cameras on my house, and he literally drove the car off the backside and then threw my yard.
Okay.
So I mean, it's been a, an issue between the two of us, but.
Okay. All right.
Does it, what, what's the comprehensive plan have for that area? And then is there a, is there supposed to be a buffer between that and residential? That, so we wouldn't have these issues?
I believe the comp plan calls for industrial because that's all along Northwestern there. I mean, the way to get a buffer would be to change that strip of I-one. I mean, that's really what's holding this back from requiring a buffer yard necessarily.
I guess my question would be, is the buffer just green space or is the buffer actual some sort of trees, fence types like that, or does it, is it just green space?
It depends. You need the green space, but if it is like a parking lot or you're gonna see traffic circulation, backs of buildings, that sort of thing, then it would be probably a six to eight foot fence or screening within three years.
The one buffer that comes to mind when you look at this property would be the buffer behind Royal Image and Midwest Bank. They're on Thirteenth. They've got a six-foot fence right there, and there's a residential property right there, and then it's a, I think most, is that, that's all C-two in there or C-one? Three C-three, okay.
Val, in the pink area north of the property, who owns that? Is that owned by Mr. Morales or Mr. Anderson? Do you own that pink area?
Which side?
South of your house.
This here.
Do you own, do you own that?
See, I think that's, that's hard to figure. I think it's, like, a certain section is mine, a certain section is his.
Okay.
About the midway point, it splits.
All right. Any idea why that would just be zoned I-one, that little strip, and then the other C-two? Was there a request to go to C-two when that building was built?
Well, what I've heard was ten years ago, maybe, something like that. Somebody had plans for the, these two lots, and they never happened. And so they requested to C-two zoning at that point in time, and then, I guess, proceeded to sell them off. And so that C-two zoning, you know, sticks with the land.
Okay.
And Val, do you know, was that residentially zoned then before, or was that, was that I-one prior to that?
If I had to take a guess, it'd be I-one, particularly with that strip in there. It makes sense that it would have gone I-one all the way down here. I don't know what this one was over across the way that we're not dealing with.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to make comments on the matter can do so now? Seeing no one else, I will ask for a planning commission report, please, Brianna.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on February fourth, two thousand and twenty at the request of Alfredo Morales to consider a zoning change from C-two, Central Business District, to I-one, Light Industrial District, on property located at three thirty-two West Northwestern Avenue, and I-two, Heavy Industrial District, to I-one, Light Industrial District, on property located at three seventeen West Northwestern Avenue. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with a nine to zero vote.
Thank you, Brianna. With that, I will close the hearing and move to item number twenty-four. I would look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-six forty-eight, approving a zone change from C-two to I-one on property located at three thirty-two West Northwestern Avenue, and I-two to I-one on property located at three seventeen West Northwestern Avenue.
Your Honor, I'd move for consideration of ordinance number five-six-four-eight, second that, Your Honor.
Okay, motion in second. Any discussion, council, on this?
Um, I'd like to just, you know, I understand Mr. Anderson's concerns, but I think, no matter what the zoning is there, his concerns are related, maybe not to the zoning, but to what's going on after hours, and maybe some mediation could be worked out on that. But I think going with the I, especially, you know, I understand the concept. He's got his dealership license and has to have that building, the C-two. But to the south there, it seems to be the zoning that's kind of meant for that area. And it would conform with that business right to the, that we see on the map, to the east, so. I mean, I don't see any issues with that zoning. I think that's a good request. It seems to have a very nice building down there, and seems to be a good, good business for the community.
I'd have to agree with the statements there in so much as, you know, yes, that's, it's adjacent to a railroad area. It's industrially zoned. It's actually becoming, you know, it's going from heavy industrial down to light industrial, so it is backing on down somewhat in the intensity that way. So it's, you know, it is an ideal that it's adjacent to an R-two piece of property, but I question about how that R-two actually moved into that space at one point in time, so.
Thank you, councilman. Any other discussion?
Like, the question I would have is, this is because basically of a technicality with that property behind this, this property that's currently C-two, they don't have to have a buffer fence put in. So it's kind of a, seems like a small tech, and we forced other people in this community to do that when they do put a business in it, where they change the zoning between residential and industrial. And we've, we've been on top of that for almost, just the ones I can think of right now off the top of my head. So that is something I think needs to be looked at or discussed here this evening.
And the chart for buffer yard requirements, C-two doesn't have any buffer requirements, no matter what zoning district they're against. So that is why there wasn't one there currently. Like I said, if the building changes, if the zoning changes, then that buffer yard would kick in. So the way they could have gotten a buffer yard in there is if that would have been I-one when the building was built. We can't really do anything right now until they expand or tear down the building and put in a new one. Then the buffer yard would kick in.
So even just with the zoning change, that doesn't activate the need for a buffer yard?
No.
Did that change from this, before with C-two? It must have, it must have changed from what we required with the buffer yard between C-two and R-one or R-two?
C-three, C-two A and C-one have buffer yard requirements, but C-two is actually downtown. Like, you don't really see C-two zoning except for.
You can go a lot to lot with C-two, okay. Gotcha.
So that's why.
That's why it's different.
I'm not quite sure why, how this C-two zoning got down here. Yeah.
Makes sense. Okay, thanks. Answer my question.
Any other discussion, council? Hearing none. Short title, please, Brianna.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing this, when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, with that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-six forty-eight carries on first reading.
That takes us to our regular agenda, item number twenty-five. I would look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-six forty-six amending Section three dash five of the city code to allow the sale of alcoholic liquor on any day from six AM until two AM the following day. As a note, ordinance number fifty-six forty-six passed on first reading at the February third, two thousand and twenty city council meeting.
I'd offer for consideration ordinance fifty-six forty-six on second reading. Second that, Your Honor.
Motion in second, and Andy, can you give us some background on this, refresh our memories, please?
Sure, Mayor, council. The ordinance you have before you again is to extend the hours at which on and off sale alcoholic beverages can be served in Norfolk in city limits until two AM. Right now, it is one AM. And again, just for everyone's, to refresh your memory, this all stemmed from some questions that I think came to the mayor and perhaps a couple of other elected officials from some establishments in town to explore the idea of extending hours till two AM as an incentive to increase the nightlife, attract younger, younger workers to town, and to just try to make it a little bit more welcoming and flexible like some other communities are in Nebraska for that. So we did have a subcommittee meeting that we scheduled and invited all of the on and off sale licensed alcohol establishments in town to the subcommittee meeting. We did have that, and most of the reception was okay, positive, or really didn't have much to say about it in a neutral capacity. So since the first reading of this code change, we have not heard anything either way. Not sure if elected officials have heard anything from constituents or businesses in town offering any feedback. But since the last meeting, nothing has come to our attention in addition, any additional concerns or questions about this change. So with that, I guess I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Okay, thanks, Andy. Had a fairly extensive discussion on this a couple of weeks ago, but would open it up to any further discussion or questions or comments among council or anyone else? Okay. Hearing none. Short title, please, Brianna.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend Section three dash five of the official city code to allow the sale of alcoholic liquor on any day from six AM until two AM the following day, provide, when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-six forty-six carries on second reading.
Your Honor, I'd move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number fifty-six forty-six on third reading as there is no discussion. Second.
Okay, motion in second to suspend the rules and approve on third reading. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-six forty-six carries on third reading.
Item twenty-six, I would look for a motion to consider approval of the first addendum agreement to the lottery operator agreement between the city, EHPV Lottery Services LLC doing business as Big Red Keno, and Endgame Lottery Services LLC doing business as Big Red Keno to extend the hours the Keno lottery may be operated from one AM to two AM.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, and Randy, background on this, please?
This is simply a companion item to the preceding ordinance. The statutes for Keno operation allow cities to extend Keno operation at two AM if liquor sales are allowed to go until two AM. And staff, and I believe Big Red, both feel that it would be less And staff and I believe Big Red both feel that it would be less confusing and beneficial to have those hours agree with each other. And that's all this addendum does is extend the hours till 2:00 AM since we extended the hours for liquor operation till 2:00 AM. And Bill Harvey from Big Red is here tonight to address this also.
Thank you Andy. Welcome.
Thank you, Your Honor and council members. I'll keep my remarks brief. Randy, well said.
Can you, can you give us your name and?
Yes, I'm sorry, Bill Harvey with EHPV Lottery Services.
Very good. Any questions for Bill while he's here? Seems to make sense that we match it up.
I think so. Less confusing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion counsel? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 27. Would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number one with Spawn Ranch Incorporated for the Miracle Skate Park Improvements Project resulting in a net decrease of $57,000 for a revised contract amount of $477,095.57.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion in second. And Steve Ramis, our Public Works Director, could you give us background on this, please?
Mayor and counsel, a couple of weeks ago you awarded a contract for the construction of the Miracle Skate Park. As a function of the bid letting and award, we were a little bit over budget. And we had talked about that at that time. This change order removes a couple of items. We changed the base course in there for an $8,000 savings. We deducted the arch, archway. That is an item that can be constructed at any time in the future and has no impact to the, to the final construction or build out of the skate park. Also, there was a concrete slab for bleachers. That was $19,000. We just felt we could do that more efficiently ourselves internally. And so there was a deduct there for that as well. So with these deducts, that brings the project into budget.
Steve, will that concrete slab be put in prior to the opening of the park for those bleachers?
Yes.
Right, thank you.
Any further questions or discussion?
I'll ask one, I guess, on the, the base course, $8,000. I guess what, what did we change to to get that deduct? And how does that affect the?
We changed from a rock, just a, a rock to an actual structural foundation, base course material. It's more of a gravel material versus just a coarse rock material. More typical what you would see in a foundation.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 28. I would entertain a motion to consider approval of an agreement for services between Retail Strategies LLC and Alabama Limited Liability Company and the city of Norfolk for retail research, analysis, and recruitment consulting services for Norfolk and Madison County for an amount not to exceed $50,000.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Motion in second. And Candace or Andy, give some background on this, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, this is an item that we as a staff have been kicking around for quite a while. We did discuss this with our economic development subcommittee. And we have notified our county representatives also that serve with our economic development group that we're, we're looking to do this. And I think, first of all, I'll just say that the, the purpose of this is to help identify the retail gaps that we have here in not only Norfolk, but in Madison County. As many of you know, we, we partner with Madison County on our economic development. So this, this agreement and the services for this year would cover a retail study for all of Madison County, Norfolk included in that. So I want to make that, that clear. But one of the, the big components of this is trying to identify those leakages, retail gaps. What are we missing? What do we need? What is our demand? Trade area? And there's even a recruitment component in this. So once we've identified, or this, the firm has identified all the data, found out what land is available for retail expansion in Norfolk, they will take that data and then use that as a recruitment tool for, for the community and for the county as well. So this is a really powerful tool that I think we can use. I think this will be some very good data that we can walk away with. This is just for one year. So if we want to continue this for more, we can. We certainly can do that, but we don't have to. This is something that is probably good to do every so many years, to do a study like this. We currently can partner with Nebraska Public Power District. They offer some services for this for, from their economists. But this is a little, is quite a bit more in depth and will offer more than what, what those services would have. So again, we've, we've discussed this with our economic, economic development subcommittee. We do have money budgeted in our economic development fund to pay for studies like this, particularly in kind of a regional or countywide area. So with that, I'd be happy to help answer any questions you might have.
So Andy, as part of this contract, the analysis will be done to help us identify retail gaps that we currently have. But there will also be assistance in actual recruitment of new retail, correct?
Yes, yeah. Yes, the, the data, the data will be collected. We'll find out what land is available, properties are available, not only vacant land, but existing property that maybe is, has room for more retail. So there's really no, you know, this isn't just big boxes. I mean, this could be any retail. I mean, they have several categories of retail that they look at in, in the study. So this is, I think, going to be a very good benefit. But yes, to answer your question, this will lead into recruitment of new retail based on the data of what we are missing and what we can do better on as a community.
So this, this will provide some assistance into our staff, our internal staff to really kind of jumpstart some things for us?
In my, in my experience with retail, it's, it's, it's not the same as you would be recruiting a business. Most retailers, if they're a national retailer, they rely on certain firms, real estate development firms to do their work for them. So it's not the same as calling up a CEO of some company that you want to bring their business to town. Retail operates very differently. And there's many, many layers of relationships you have to get, get through to get, to get to those folks in charge. So this company is one that works around the country. They've worked in several communities. We have contacted several communities that they've worked in. So we've gotten a positive reception from them. And so far, they've been pretty, pretty good to work with as far as getting our agreement buttoned up and getting some things addressed. So I think this is going to provide some pretty good data for us to be able to use to find out where we can do better as a community. Because this is anecdotally, I do hear, and I'm sure you all hear as well, that, you know, we need more, there's areas where we're missing. And Norfolk does serve a pretty large area. So the degree that we can help bring in more of those opportunities for areas that, that we're missing, I think would position us better going forward.
Very good. Thank you Andy.
So Andy, you would, based on the research you've already done, you would, you would say these folks have a, a good track record in what we always consider the, the changing face of retail. It certainly isn't, isn't retail as it was five years ago.
Correct.
And it's not going to be what it, what it is today five years from now. So you feel pretty comfortable that they have a grasp of that?
Correct. And again, I think, having said all of that, I think the data that, that we're going to get from this to find out what are we missing is probably, in my opinion, the biggest assistance for us to help, how do we move forward in recognizing all those changes that you just mentioned?
Very good.
Yeah, how, how do we do that? You know, what, first to find out what is the problem and then go from there. So I, I would say everything you just said is, is accurate.
Right, very good. Thank you.
I think it's important to note what you said before about Norfolk having a large retail pull factor. In fact, when you look at analysis of this across the state, Norfolk is always highest in regional pull factor just because we serve such a large retail area, which I think points to the importance that we find ways to be proactive and engaged in new retail recruitment as the face of retail continues to change and it's more and more challenging. It'll be important for us to realize where we have opportunities to serve not only the community, but the region. So I think this is a smart way of leveraging funds that are committed to economic development anyway and that we're leveraging along with Madison County to not only look at Norfolk, but, but the county as well. So I think it's a prudent investment. Any other questions or discussion counsel? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 29. I would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number one with Penrose Construction Company for the Brosch Avenue 5th to 1st Street project resulting in a net decrease of $142,962.35.
So moved. Second that, Your Honor.
Motion in second. And Steve Ramis, some background on this, please.
Mayor and counsel, this is tied, this, this is a, a reduction in storm sewer costs on the Brosch Avenue project. Brosch Avenue was designed and bid out about a year ago. At that time, we were just entering preliminary design on the river restoration project. That project is currently still in the preliminary design stages. We would anticipate moving towards final design toward somewhere closer to midsummer, late summer of this year to advance that project. What's going on here is as a function of the river restoration and the construction of the various grade drops in there. That area north of the Alco building, that grade's going to get raised. There's going to be sidewalks going in there as a function of the park restoration. And so we need to be sure that when we design this outfall, it's taking the storm water off Brosch, that that design is, is fully in place so we can appropriately design the outfall structure for Brosch. So it's a, it's a deduct here. At some point, these costs will come back as, as part of another project to, to finish that storm sewer out.
Thank you Steve. Any questions for Steve Ramis?
So just what's there now in that intersection, we'll be able to handle since we're not going to replace it now?
It'll be able to handle most of it. Part of this change order is also do it. There's a 10-inch HDPE that'll be drilled, drilled under 1st Street to drain out the storm sewer system in Brosch. Most of it, probably 80% of it, will go down 1st Street and tie into Norfolk Avenue. It will, it will certainly fill that system. The ultimate design takes all that out north of Alco.
This is just to prevent us from tearing the intersection up twice?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 30. Would look for a motion to consider approval of a professional engineering services letter agreement, amendment number one with Olson Incorporated for the South Highway 81 Water Extension Project for an amount of $60,801.
I'll make the motion.
Second that, Your Honor.
Motion in second. And again, Steve, some background on this, please.
Mayor and counsel, this is, this is a water extension that would tie on to the water extension we did, taking water south of, of the river, terminating about 300 feet south of the river. This project is a function of outreach from local businesses down there on Highway 81, asking for, for city water services. These, these requests started coming in about a year ago. And so we spent the better part of the last year having conversations with, with those businesses, with, with the rest of the businesses down, down there south. We brought a contract to the table back in early part of December so that we could move, move the surveying, topographic surveying portion forward. This would move the design portion forward for that. Just kind of a big picture, this takes water all the way down to Sherwood. There'll be a crossing underneath Highway 81 so we can get water over to the airport. As well, there would take water west at North Airport Road over to 13th Street. And then it would go up 13th Street to the Caterpillar Dealership. And that's where the water would terminate there on 13th. Again, it's, it's really driven by requests from various businesses over there. As we've reached out to the remainder of the businesses, most of them realize that at some point water needs to come in there. And so they're, they're supported with the project acquiescing to, to the needs of the other businesses in the area. We will be coming back at some point here for a conversation about an assessment district in conjunction with this project.
Okay, thank you Steve. Any questions? Discussion counsel?
Steve, with this project, will there be enough water capabilities for fire suppression?
Yes. We did also, I think, when we, when we were here in December and had the conversation about the topographic survey, one of, one of the council members asked that we follow up with the National Guard Office, that there was some awareness, there might be desire there. We did have those conversations with multiple levels of the National Guard and they are not interested.
What's, what's the path of that water? Is it roughly follow the improvements we made two, three years ago in gas and sewer?
Yeah, it'd be on the, it would go the east side of Highway 81 along that frontage road all the way down to Sherwood.
And who did the engineering on that?
Olson's.
Did they?
Yeah.
Do you, I mean, is there some savings because they've already been down that road once? Is this, is this typical or is it reduced?
It is, you know, we, we, as we monitor all of our contracts with all of our consultants, the fact that Olson's was there, they've got the, the plans, specs pretty much drawn up. It's just getting into the plans, the, pretty much the extension, changing the quantities within the specs and the dates, and it's, it's ready to go. So the price that they gave us was very reasonable. I don't recall it. I'd hate to throw out a number right now, but my recollection is it's, it's in that eight, eight and a half percent range.
All right. So it would be your opinion that we're not, we're not paying twice for the same information?
In terms of design, no.
Yeah.
No, no, nothing was done in terms of design south of where it currently terminates.
Okay, great, thank you. Olson did the sewer too, back years, whenever that was done?
Did Olson do the sewer? Yes, as Dennis.
Okay.
I was thinking it was.
They all know what's there.
You know, one of the things, I know, one of the questions at the last meeting was, had to do with that topographic survey and whether or not we could reuse it. There's a lot of risk in, in associated with that. You know, that survey was $6,800 if I remember right. The risk that the designer would assume by not going out there and re-surveying that and capturing any changes that have occurred in utilities or otherwise isn't, isn't worth that $6,800.
Any further questions? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
And that concludes this meeting of the Norfolk City Council. We are adjourned.